Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the August 6, 2013 Board of Education Meeting. We have a quorum of members present, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anybody have any students or guests they need to recognize or identify today?
Mr. President, if I might, I'd like to recognize two members of the audience, two people in the audience, former counselor and coach and teacher, Mr. Robert Morrison, and he has with him his grandson, who is working on a merit badge in Boy Scouts, and his part, one of the requirements is attending business meetings, so welcome the Morrison family.
Thank you, welcome. Anybody else? Okay, next is the approval of the agenda. The agenda as recommended by the Agenda Planning Committee has been provided to members. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Brightman. Are there any comments, discussion, or amendments?
Mr. President, I would like to move to amend the agenda to include an item under miscellaneous business, to vote to suspend Policy BAA, and ask the Policy Committee to look at the policy and either recommend changes or rescind.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Brightman. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, the question is on Mr. Ridenhour's amendment to the agenda. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes six to one, and the student member concurs with the majority. So the question returns to the agenda as proposed. Are there any other discussion, amendments, or comments? Seeing none, the question is on the agenda as amended. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes six to one, with the student member concurring with the majority. The approval of the minutes?
Mr. President, I have minutes from four sessions: business meeting on July the 5th, a work session held on July the 16th, a closed session of the board on July the 16th, and also a business meeting on July the 16th, and I would move for approval of the minutes of those four meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Brightman. Are there any questions, comments, or amendments to the minutes? If there are none, all those in favor of the minutes? Are there any opposed? I think that was seven to zero, with the student concurring with the majority. Superintendent's report.
Well, thank you. Our first item is, we're going to have a presentation is -- help here, just a second -- on Park, is that correct? Are you guys first? Thank you. So if you'll come forward, we're going to talk a little bit about the math standards and how they add a level of complexity that our students have not yet had.
Oh, we're changing.
No, you're not first. That's my fault, thank you. I have to get to the agenda. Thank you. So the first item of business today is that we are, we have reached a settlement with our employee associations, and we wanted to take the time to publicly sign these documents. We wanted to sign the documents because I think it demonstrates a level of cooperation and understanding between all of us who are privileged to educate the young people. These documents this year were primarily focused on salary, and I think everybody in this room realizes that every one of the working professionals in this district, regardless of their status in terms of the employee's eye, understands that each one is critical to the work that we do. So from the food service workers, the bus drivers, the custodians, the folks who work in maintenance, to the classroom teachers, to our assistant principals, principals and supervisors, we do, I think, appreciate and value all the work you do. And so what we're going to ask is to have Denise Frye from WCTA come forward, she's representing the Washington County Teachers Association. We're also going to ask to come forward Anne Marie Hines, who is the WCESP president, and James Bowers II, who is the vice president, and we're going to have a signing ceremony for both of these documents. So Denise, if you're prepared to come forward, Anne Marie, and James, if you'll come forward, Dr. Harding, if you and I will come forward, we will sign these documents. So the first agreement that we're going to sign today is the agreement between the Washington County Educational Support Personnel and the school board, and we'll sign that one first. And Dr. Harding, if you'll sign on behalf of the board? Anne Marie, and Jimmy, if you'll sign on behalf of the association. For the fourth degree, you're working together. Jimmy, thank you. And now we'll sign a document with the Washington County Teachers Association, Denise Frye. We'll sign on behalf of the association, Denise is the president of the association. Dr. Harding will sign as the president and representative of the board. We understand that Mr. Becker was not able to come today, and we look forward to having his signature as well on the document. Anne Marie, thank you so much for your leadership. Jimmy, thank you for taking time from work to be here today. I think it symbolizes how important it is to us as a school system and that you would take the time to do this, so thank you so much.
Can I just, on behalf of the board as well, reiterate what Dr. Wilcock said, which is, I know this board's appreciation for what all of our employees do, and I think it's great that we could have this signing ceremony so close to the first day of school because we're all getting ready to rev up into another exciting year for our students and our team, and please know how much the board appreciates what each and every one of you does.
Thank you. I also want to share with the community that we have reached an agreement with our Administrators' Association, our A&amp;S group. It's a little bit different than working with our associations in that we have really what's our meeting for confer process. We have reached agreement with that group, and we'll find another way to recognize that group at some later time. Which brings us now to the ELA Literacy Park Assessment Presentation. Beth Downing, who is a supervisor for English Language Arts, is going to be here, and Beth, I'll let you introduce your companion in this, who's well-known to me and to my family as she's helping my daughter to be a much better student, so thank you.
Good afternoon. The last two times I've met with you to talk about the English Language Arts and Literacy Park Assessments to come, I spoke with you about the focus that is changing from, with the texts that our students will see on Park, to that nonfiction focus. We looked at the third grade prototype that focused on science, and the supervisor of science, Sandy Graff, was with me that time. We also looked at a seventh grade example, where we looked at the social studies text, that was the focus of that particular prototype. We talked about the big switch in writing that will be coming, there will actually be composition that will be scored on the Park Assessment. And today, we're going to share with you really the last set of prototypes that we have so far, and that is the 10th grade set of prototypes. So you will see much more complex text today, and we're very excited as English teachers to share with you that there is a literary focus to this particular prototype. So I'm joined today by Rachel Kane, Kirk Patrick, who's one of our central office lead teachers in the English office. Rachel joined our new team last year, and she's been instrumental in developing curriculum guides for all of our secondary grades. Rachel most recently taught at Smithsburg High School for 10 years in the English classrooms, and for the last six years, and one of the big reasons I asked her to come and talk with you today is because she's served as a consultant for the ETS, and so she's actually been a writer for the HSA English Assessment, and knows those items very well, and has been working with us, of course, as we learn more about Park. So Rachel's going to share with you first a sample from the HSA and compare that to what we know about what's coming in the 10th grade with Park.
Good afternoon. If you look at the first sample we provided, it's called "Non-Representational Art." This is an excerpt from a nonfiction collection of autobiographical short stories, relatively recent, it was published in 1993, so it's a more modern example of text, but this is typical of the text you would see on the HSA, and if you just read the first couple of sentences, you'll get a very good feel for the complexity of this kind of text. Note, too, that it says at the bottom that the text is twice as long, so this is just half of what the student would encounter in terms of the excerpt on the HSA. If we look at the next slide on the page, these are two questions that would come with this type of passage, and you'll notice the first question asks about the narrator most likely uses the word, so it's asking about specific word choice or diction, and then the connotation of that, why would the author use those words to suggest something about another character in the story? The second question, "Momma can best be described again," is characterizations, asking them to, after having read the text, how would they characterize, using adjectives, the character? And that's very typical of the HSA question in terms of very sort of, they'll call the sentence, and it'll be there for the student to see, so they're not flipping back to the text, or it will just ask for them to make a general summary statement. The next page shows what we have for our Grade 10 prototype for Park. It involves two texts, one which is Ovid's Metamorphosis, and specifically the part about Daedalus of Icarus, and a second one is by Anne Sexton, a poem that talks about the same topic. So if you, if you take a look at the poem, this is a very long epic poem, and this is just a portion, it starts on line 289, but it goes all the way to three, line 399, is the section that the students would have to read. And you'll notice that the question is a two-part question, which did not exist or does not exist currently on HSA. The good news is, is Part A, that first question, the stem of the question actually is almost verbatim to the type of stem we use on the HSA for that question. So the wording on that first question is almost identical to an HSA stem in terms of identifying a main idea, and actually the answers are also in the same format of HSA. The part that differs is Part B, where after they've decided what they think the main idea is, they have to then identify three pieces of text to support that conclusion, and that is not on HSA, and it never has been. So that's the, that's the next step that we're going to be asking our students to take, not only to identify the main idea, but then to support their main idea. So one of the key shifts for Common Core is that text evidence and supporting what they say with that. After doing that, and several different types of multiple choice questions, the prototype then moves to the writing portion, which we don't have on HSA, we currently just have editing and sentence revision. So this writing piece asks them to talk about how Anne Sexton, who wrote after Ovid, has transformed that idea of Icarus in this, in this thing. So, and then one of the other things they stress, and the writing that our students have been doing has been graded on content. For Park, it's going to be rated, graded not only on content, but for their mechanics, their writing ability. So they're being scored both on their writing skill and their understanding, which is another shift that I think our students are going to have to face in terms of producing under a time constraint, not only understanding, but good mechanics and writing.
So that is the prototype, and actually, if you feel so inclined, there are a couple of other questions on ParkOnline.org where you can see we have as samples. And I just saw on Twitter this morning that Park will be releasing in two weeks more prototypes, so we're excited to see what, how this whole thing is evolving. Of course, we're working closely with the State Department, and as we move into this transition year and closer to Park, there will be field testing, and again, we're excited to see what will come of that and how we'll be involved as a county to get a chance to see more prototypes and more items.
I do want to just tell you how scary it is, I think, that you follow Park on Twitter.
That's true.
There are some circles where somebody's saying, "Get a life." I'm just teasing, I'm sorry. So thank you. Are there any questions for the board?
Do you have any idea what length of time they would be given to do an essay such as this?
We do have some general ideas right now that they're going to give students in the, in the field testing scenario. So there are three tasks, and the literary task, for instance, I believe, and I'll have to go check ParkOnline.org, I believe for this particular task, the students would have about, is it 65 minutes?
For the whole thing.
For the whole performance. We think, yeah, the, for the each essay portion, the students will have about 25 minutes to respond per essay, and with all of the multiple choice questions, about 65 minutes in total.
So they're probably only looking for like a paragraph?
An entire essay.
Twenty-five minutes, I would think that's.
Yes, it's a, and again, that's for field testing purposes. That's what they're setting as their parameters, and of course, we'll learn, they'll learn through that field testing what students really need.
SAT is a 25-minute essay, so we do prepare them already for that timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Brightman?
I know we're hoping that our teachers and students start taking more risk, become more creative in their approach to different subjects. Let's say I take this test, and I pick an answer, and I defend it in a very creative way, but it's the wrong answer, I chose the wrong Part B. Do I get some sort of partial? Do I get credit for being creative, for taking a risk, or do I just get cut off at the knees?
For the two-part questions, our understanding is that the students have to get Part A correct, but could have different choices for Part B. And of course, for the essay, that's a whole different idea.
Could my senses, the essay would defend your Part B choice?
It, I don't know for certain that the essay will be directly related to a multiple choice question that might come before it, but the students through the essay portion could certainly defend.
You could go back to the text.
Right.
And pull out.
Right. And defend a very creative answer.
Would be partial grades for that?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
The essay portion, will that be graded locally, or is it sent out to the testing companies to, to score? How will that take place?
Right. We're part of a ever smaller consortium in Park, and all of the essays, from all of the states, will be scored by Park. Initially, we were told that they would only be using artificial intelligence the way that ACT scores essays, but most recently, again through Twitter, I learned that human eyes will read every essay and score every essay.
Good luck.
Maybe why they cost so much.
Turnaround time, then, to get results.
We are promised, again, we'll see, but we are promised to have assessment scores back in time to make decisions for the following year's placement discussions.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes, you mentioned that the essay is scored both on writing and understanding. How does the writing process figure into this? As this is going to be something that they're, the final essay, they'll be putting into the computer, yes?
Right.
So there's no paper and pencil involved as far as pre-writing for kids to get a chance to organize their thoughts and ideas, or is that provided as part of the setup prior to the actual, here's my final piece?
Right. I, again, have recently read that students will be able to use actual paper and pencil beside their computer. That's good practice and universal, designed for learning, for students to have different ways to do their pre-writing. They'll also have a place on the, the actual screen to be able to do pre-writing as well, but of course, only the final draft is scored. And if a student chooses not to do any drafting or pre-writing, that's okay.
But the pre-writing is, I mean, the process is still encouraged and.
Absolutely.
Supported through the Park, and whether it's paper, pencil, or the pre-writing done on the.
Absolutely, and we have an expectation that, that our students are writing full-process papers. By secondary school, by sixth grade, students should be writing full-process papers every marking period.
Quick question, how exactly are the essays scored? Are they scored on a rubric, or is it more of a holistic kind of scoring?
We, we have a prototype rubric, again, you could find that at ParkOnline.org. They've given us, it's a very general rubric right now. At the lower grades, it only has two or three points. At the upper grades, it has four points, but it is, it's quite holistic. But yes, we will be using, they will be using rubrics to score.
I'll ask one question, it's, I guess, the inverse of the question I asked last time I was, we had a discussion of Park. Are there ever any reading texts that, or, or answers that require math or visual spatial skills to answer correctly?
On the ELA literacy?
Yes.
Assessment? I think if we know that, we haven't seen a prototype that has that, but there are standards.
When you say visual spatial, do you mean in terms of manipulating something on the screen, or?
Well, I mean, where a student would have to have a, have a competency in visual spatial skills in order to answer the ELA assessment question correctly. I don't mean just sliding something on the screen, but there, I mean, they're going back to my assessments I used to take, you know, if this shape were, how can you slide this shape to make it look like this shape? Which of these shapes are identical, but that's all visual spatial skills and understanding how, you know, how you can picture things in three dimensions, or any math-type skills that are inherent in having to answer the ELA questions.
I don't believe so.
I have not seen a prototype that has that. I've not seen a prototype that says, given your understanding of the community property, answer this either. So I've not seen any math embedded in the ELA standards.
There's a standard that relates to visual representations of maybe a theme that's brought out in the literary text, but, no, I agree.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have one more question. I would think that one, one skill that you would need to do well on this, to write a good essay in 25 minutes, you'd have to be able to type pretty quickly, so, especially if you're going to take time for pre-writing, so.
Absolutely.
Is that going to be, do you foresee that as any kind of problem, like a student that's not as good at typing, or?
Right, we spoke about this last time, didn't we? Keyboarding skills, absolutely essential as part of the process. I'm trying to remember how you worded it last time, Dr. Wilcock.
Well, I think that, yes, it will be a problem for some kids, but we're continuing to try to embed keyboarding skills in our early grades, so the kids have this experience, but quite honestly, and the folks at Park have said repeatedly that they do not want to let the keyboarding get in the way of the student's demonstration of their knowledge, but they really haven't provided great clarity as to how they're going to do that.
Okay.
I'm being prodded by one of my colleagues here, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna lay, I'm gonna lay the predicate to the question I asked. I mean, it is, it does continue to be my concern that students who are not as skilled verbally, who are required to explain so much on a math assessment, are not going to be able to score as well as a student who is very skilled verbally. You understand what I'm saying? You need a certain amount of verbal skill to do well on a math assessment. You don't need any math skill to do well on the ELA assessment. And I wonder if that doesn't run the risk of certain students who may be very gifted and very talented not being identified as such. And that's, that's really the only reason I asked the question, is to make, make sure I was correct in my understanding that one is really required to be successful in the other, but it doesn't work in reverse. And that's not to say that literacy and reading and writing are not the absolute cornerstone of what we do, but particularly for, you know, a lot of research shows that for young boys, those verbal skills come later, and for girls, they come earlier. So how does that fit into how we're going to interpret these assessments and what they really mean when a student takes a math assessment? It may not come out as high as, I just think there's a whole range of issues there that I hope we're at least thinking about, even if we don't have the answer. So that's the predicate. Are there any other comments or questions?
I have.
Yes, Mrs. Hartsman?
Just a quick question, you had mentioned that the mechanics and usage and so on, and also. You had mentioned that the mechanics and usage and so on, and also if they're using a computer, can they push spell check?
I believe there is a spell check function. I haven't read that kind of detail yet. I'll see what I can find out.
Okay, because that also usually gives you grammar, right?
Any word? You don't have a red squiggle or a green squiggle, but I'll check to see what I can find out.
I would guess that the program that they would use to give these tests would make sure that you would not be able to, I mean, if you're not using a specific program for it, you shouldn't be able to use spell check.
I'll check.
Is there any other discussion?
So thank you very much. Appreciate it. Great job, Rachel. Thank you. Which brings us to the third item of the superintendent's report today, and that is that we wanted to update the board on some of the planning that we've done for the common spaces that the board uses. And so with your permission, what I'm going to do is share something with you. Oops, I didn't want to do it that way. And so if you look to the screen, what you'll see is a partial diagram of the new facility at 10-435 Downsfield Pike, which we don't have a name for yet, but we're working on. It's that building out there, the former Allegheny Energy Center. And what we're showing, if you look to the bottom left of the diagram up there, you see the stairs that enter into the front entrance of the Allegheny Center. Let me make it a little bigger in there. And so there you can see the front stairs going up, coming through the main lobby, and then what you see is a hallway that leads you down into the green area. And in that green area, what you'll see is the proposed new location of the boardroom. This boardroom has about 2,400 square feet in it, which compares to this boardroom having about 1,800 square feet. So you can imagine really almost another half room, or a third of a room to this room for your space. You can see the way we currently have it configured. There is chair storage behind, because we use this room for multiple purposes, not just board meetings. You can see that we will build a presentation area, and then you can see that we will have a semicircular board table that right now, we are talking about, will it be elevated? How, if so, how high? We're having a lot of conversations around that. Is it going to be manufactured locally or will we manufacture it? Will we use some, a design similar to this or will we flatten it out? We're having those conversations. But the key is, is that we have a significant board space. In addition to that, if you look immediately above in this diagram, you'll see the board conference room, which is 610 square feet, which is a little over, it's a little, almost 200 square feet larger than the meeting space that we now use upstairs in this building, where we're in a room with about 430 square feet. So you can see you've gained not only a lot of seating space for staff and others who might be invited to your private session, but you have a big work session, big work conference table. Immediately above that in this diagram, or behind it, and this is all on, is it the south side of the building, Rob? On the south side of the building, you'll have windows wrapping all around, and then you'll come into the board office area. The board office area, in this schematic, when you look here towards the top, what you see is a large work table for the board members when they come in. You also see one, two, three partition areas that are right above the board office tag there, that could be some type of private board work area. It would be similar to some of the cubicles that you see in higher-end office sites. But we'll, we're going to talk about that a little bit more perhaps in a moment. And then right across the hall from that, you see not just a closet or cloak area, but you see an area there that will have a sink and a small refrigerator to take care of the long, day-long meetings and the things that we have for these meetings. And then you'll see the office area for the board secretary of 137 square feet. That's actually significantly larger than the space that she has now. The other thing I'd like to point out to you, as you see these red areas kind of coming across the screen, this would be the area where purchasing would be. If you continue on, you see finance, and then we really cut it off. But the reason I showed those there in this drawing is because I wanted you to see that first floor will be all of our public-facing spaces. So we'll have a significant portion of the first floor is for the board, and then we'll have some of the other public-facing spaces. You'll see also, right in front of purchasing, there is a large conference room that will be used primarily by purchasing, but would also be available to the board should it need a secondary conferencing space that was semi-private. If the board, on the other hand, decided that they wanted to meet closer to the front of the building, you'll see that beyond the chair storage area that I initially showed, but adjacent to the entryway, there is a space that will be reserved for public meetings as well. So I wanted to share this with the board and see if it met your thinking at this point in time. We are on track with our progress around this facility. We have asbestos abatement undergoing right now. We should be done in the next two to three weeks with the asbestos abatement. I want to remind you, board members, but also the community, that our asbestos abatement came in under what we projected the bid was, so we are financially still right where we said we would be with this facility. We will soon have some other contracts for some of the other systems in the building that we'll be bringing to the board. And we are still planning for a late December, early January opening of the facility for the board. So I'm certainly open to hearing from you about what you think of this, and you can do it either now or you can do it later.
Mrs. Breitman?
A couple, I guess, questions, responses. The board office area, it's certainly significantly larger than we have right now. I'm looking at our board assistant, actually measured, well, we took a break for dinner, lunch, whatever it was, and it's about the same. It's about 140 square feet, 137 square feet, and it does seem fairly cramped for everything she has in there now. And she does have window space now, and she's there five days a week. I would, hopefully a colleague won't shoot me, but I would like to see her office space moved to the window side, so she actually has some windows and maybe give her more space and since we're there so seldom, just during board meetings or coming in to pick up mail or whatever, that sort of give her the prime real estate, just a thought, whether that could be reconfigured and give her whatever that, the area where the large table is shown. I don't know if she needs that much space, but just thoughts. The board auditorium, I know that in the past, we've talked about being elevated in this area tends to be less audience-friendly. I don't know if there's some way we can configure this so when citizens come in, that there seems to be a little bit lower sense of stress to them. If there's some way we can make this a little friendlier in how we receive the citizens who speak before us, so those would be a couple thoughts I would have.
Mrs. Fisher?
I'm just wondering if the stairs that lead to the vestibule and the main lobby will be ADA accessible?
Several things. First of all, if you remember, this is on the first floor, so there's a ground floor directly below it. So folks who have any kind of difficulty navigating stairs can come in on the ground floor. They can come down this hallway, and then you'll see right next to the vault area, there is an elevator. The stairways will also be upgraded to current life safety codes, but I don't know if that answers your question.
It does, thank you.
Are there any other comments, feedback, or direction for the superintendent?
I'll say for myself, I appreciate the opportunity to comment on this. This is a large part, this space will define a large part of how the people's elected members of the board interact with them, and I appreciate your giving us the opportunity to make sure that we think it's going to meet the needs that we have to work with the people who elect us and the people that we represent. I like the design quite a bit. One of my primary concerns with this particular space in this building is, as I'm sure the staff knows, there are very few conference rooms. There are very few places to go and sit and talk to somebody if constituent wants to talk to you where there's not traffic going, or where you're not going to be interrupted. And I appreciate the fact that in this building and near the board's office space, there are many places where a board member could do that or a staff member could do that. I think that's a big improvement, and I think it'll certainly help me feel like I can do my job the way I would like to be able to do it. So thank you for that. So there were two suggestions by Mrs. Breitman, one about space for the board secretary. I don't know if anybody has comments on it.
I do.
I tend, well, go ahead.
One, please don't forget that this entire area has windows around it. Is that correct? So my sense is that the way we place the partition there, we can let a lot of light into that area. We certainly could perhaps flip-flop it and move it to the other side, but to put it in the corner, I think, would really take away from some of the opportunities that the board would have for conferencing around this table with constituents or just as a board. But let us look at that space. Rob, if you would kind of carry this back, I know, I see Jeff back there too, who's been doing the yeoman's work in helping us with this. We certainly can look at either sliding it across the hallway, not the hallway, but across the room.
Where the little cubicles are, maybe around that side.
Yeah, flip-flopping that. And that might also allow us to open up that entryway a little bit more. But there, no matter what, I would, I share with you that one tremendous space gainer for us is that we will no longer have the board, well, the school district attorney and the paralegal in this office. So that creates some additional space in, for us to work with. And probably beyond that, it then says some of the things that are now in the board secretary's office will, can be out of there. So big printer, you know, the copier machine that's across the way, those things can now be deployed a little more effectively for her.
And I know, I know Ms. Chekovick would never say this, but I'll say it. When the board's not there, which we're not, nine out of 10 weekdays, that whole office is ours. That's the way I would handle it if I were in her shoes. I'd be using that big conference table. I realize she probably wouldn't, she wouldn't say that, but I'll say it. Are there any other, Mrs. Hartsman?
Well, I just want to kind of echo that with the office being moved over by the window. I think just the fact that when you're working on something, that you can stop for one second and look out and see a window instead of a wall. And if the cubicles are, as I believe Dr. Wilcox showed me, it would cover any view of out those windows, and it is beautiful, it's a beautiful view out there. So it would be a shame for it to be wasted when she's there every day.
We can, we certainly look at that, Mrs. Hartsman, and Mrs. Breitman, we will.
And I know we all struggle with the question of whether this is elevated or not, because if it's down, then people feel like they can't see us and they're going this way. And if it's elevated, it looks like we're judges or something, which I certainly don't want to be or think I am. So I know that's a difficult.
Maybe not quite as much. Just not quite as big a step, but you're right, you can't see people from the audience if you're down.
Would there be, I don't know, an opportunity to, instead of having a single, to have segmented areas so that we were down on, is it an elevation issue or, this just looks, I just know people, a lot of citizens walk up here and they get very nervous when they sit down at the table, and I'm just trying to figure out a way of how we could take that and try to present ourselves.
Let us think about that. And I think Rob has expressed a similar concern about what would the finishings look like? Will they be open and will they be inviting? Jeff has had similar conversations. So let us talk about that, and I'm sure we can find a beanbag that will fit for you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. You just have to wake me up every so often.
We'll be able to do that.
Is there any other direction anybody wants to provide the superintendent?
Speak now or forever hold your peace, because we're going to live with it, folks. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, that ends the superintendent's report. We'll move on to public comment. There have not been any members of the public who've signed up to speak. Is there anybody here who has a desire to speak or say anything? All right, we'll move on to old business. First, under old business is the second reading of revised policy ADF, wellness, physical and nutritional health.
Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Harding, on July 16th, 2013, the second reading of the proposed changes to policy ADF was presented to the members of the Board of Education for their consideration. As a result of these comments that were afforded, the Board of Education's Policy Committee was requested to reexamine policy ADF. On July 23rd, 2013, the Policy Committee conducted a public meeting. The Policy Committee considered the provisions of Section 204 of the Child Nutrition Act of 2004 adopted by Congress and recommended that policy ADF be updated by including certain sections of the Child Nutrition Act and board policy ADF. The Policy Committee also recommended that the administrative regulations adopted by the superintendent must address the requirements referenced in Section 204, such as establishing goals for physical activity in the schools and establishing nutritional guidelines for food made available on each school campus. The Policy Committee is recommending the approval of the second reading of policy ADF.
Thank you, Dr. Marco. Is there a motion approved?
Mr. President, I move for the approval on second read of policy ADF entitled Wellness, Physical and Nutritional Health.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Fisher?
Just a few things I'd like to point out. There was some discussion last time about the details and whether they should be in the policy itself or the regulations. And 70% of the LEAs do have the details in the regulations rather than the policy, and the state really doesn't have a preference. These things were looked into. Also, it was questioned about the wellness committee, and the committee is not required by law to be a board committee. I think there was a question about that. And the regulations, it's intended that there will be a, an update by the committee reported to the board whenever they do meet, so I think those were some questions that were posed the last meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Any other comments or, Mrs. Williams?
Yes, I have a question. I was wondering if this policy is submitted at any time to a regulating agency, or is there a time when this policy would be presented as part of a review?
MSD reviews the school system's wellness policy annually when they review the Food and Nutrition Service Department under USDA regulations, so it is reviewed annually.
Okay, so we're satisfied, the Policy Committee is satisfied then that policy as it's presented here then would stand up to that review and we'd be in good stead with those reviewers?
I believe that's correct, but I don't want to put words in their mouths.
Okay.
That review would include a review of the regulations, not just the policy, wouldn't it?
Absolutely.
Okay. May I have a follow-up question?
Sure, absolutely.
You mentioned, Dr. Marco, I believe, in your introduction that you looked at the Women, Infants, and Children's Reauthorization Act of 2004. There's also the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010 that was also looked at, and so everything is, okay, great, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there other questions or comments? Seeing none, the question is on Mrs. Fisher's motion.
Seeing none, the question is on Mrs. Fisher's motion to approve policy ADF. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, and the student concurs. Thank you. Next is consideration of the first reading of policy GCM, Evaluation of School System Employees. Dr. Marco?
On June 25th, 2013, and July 23rd, 2013, the Board of Education's Policy Committee conducted a public meeting to discuss proposed changes to policy GCM, which is entitled Evaluation of School System Employees. This policy provides a concise statement regarding the standards that are applied when educational support staff, teachers, principals, and school administrators are evaluated. The Policy Committee's review of this policy was prompted by the enactment of a new law that requires a school board to establish performance evaluation criteria for certified teachers and principals. That includes student growth as a significant component of the evaluation and as one of multiple measures of performance. The performance evaluation criteria are to be mutually agreed upon by the school system and the employees' representation. As a result of its review of this matter, the Policy Committee is offering the following recommendations. Paragraph A of this policy applies to all school system employees. The members of the committee concluded that this section of the policy would be much clearer if the last paragraph was relocated as the second paragraph. Paragraph B of this policy concerns educational support personnel. The first sentence, which concerns when staff is to be evaluated, has been deleted because this will be addressed in the administrative regulation. A new sentence is to be added, which reads as follows. Educational support personnel will be evaluated in accordance with Maryland Law, Board of Education Policy, the administrative regulation adopted by the superintendent, and the performance evaluation criteria developed by the local school system in consultation with the exclusive employee representatives. Paragraph C concerns teachers. With regards to teachers, the first two paragraphs, which concern when a tenured and non-tenured teacher will be evaluated, have been deleted because this is to be addressed in administrative regulation. A new sentence has been added concerning teachers, which states as follows. Teachers will be evaluated in accordance with Maryland Law, Board of Education Policy, the administrative regulation adopted by the superintendent, and the performance evaluation criteria mutually agreed on by the local school system and the exclusive employee representative. Two new sentences have been added concerning non-tenured teachers, which state as follows. Non-tenured teachers will be evaluated each of the first three years of employment, and evaluation may be extended to a fourth year under different circumstances. Should tenure not be recommended at the end of the third year, a fourth year or provisional year may be awarded solely at the discretion of the administrator in consultation with the superintendent or his or her designated. Paragraph D concerns administrators and supervisors. A new paragraph has been added, which concerns just school principals, and it states as follows. Principals shall be evaluated in accordance with Maryland Law, Board of Education Policy, the administrative regulation adopted by the superintendent, and the performance evaluation criteria mutually agreed on by the local school system and the principal's representative. The existing sentence in this paragraph has been modified to read as follows. All other administrators and supervisors shall be formally evaluated every school year in accordance with Maryland Law, Board of Education Policy, administrative regulation adopted by the superintendent, and in consultation with the administrators and supervisors So, at this time, we bring the first reading for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Marco. Is there a motion to approve policy GCM on first read?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Fisher?
On, under Section C, the number one, non-tenured teachers, I believe the next-to-last word in that sentence, we changed to extenuating rather than different. I think that's the way it appears on your board docs.
Yeah, that's the way it is online.
There's two different versions, it seems, floating around out there. The version I've got says extenuating.
Right, and we had a rather, we did have a discussion about that word in particular, and extenuating was, I just want to make sure, because I think, Mr. Marco used the word different or something, but just want to make sure that's clear.
Is there any other discussion on the policy? Mrs. Brightman?
I'm struggling with this. I guess I'm trying to figure out why we are coming up with such a wordy policy when the model, I mean, couldn't we use the, an exhibit for the model that's been decided on and just make a, maybe just use a? I'm trying to figure out why we just don't say this is aligned with the model, because it's sort of been taken out of our hands. Is this redundant? Is there a purpose behind making these repetitive statements? Help me understand.
State law has been very specific regarding teachers and principals. It has not spoken to educational support personnel or supervisor or other administrative positions. So, I believe it was, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Fisher, I believe it was to make sure that we gave our due diligence to the two groups that are not spoken to in law at this time.
And we just went ahead and put teachers in there because we could, and it just made sense to handle all of?
Correct. It specifically speaks to principals and teachers in law. However, it does not speak to the director of maintenance or the supervisor of mathematics or assistant principals, interestingly enough.
Really?
It speaks to principals and teachers.
That's right. You're right. Okay, thank you.
Are there other comments or questions?
I'll just add to what Dr. Marco said, that we did discuss that quite a bit, is how to balance what you put in here versus, I mean, it has been taken out of our hands, which is why most of it now is, you can do it according to Maryland law. But we knew the tenure issues were very important to our employees, so we thought it was important to at least
Send that message, maybe?
To send the message and put it in the policy so that anybody can look in the policy and see what the rules are related to that. Even though with those two, those are largely outside of our hands as well. So, that was some of the thinking, at least as I heard it in the meeting. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the question's on Mr. Bailey's motion to approve policy GCM on first reading. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero, and the student concurs.
Thank you, Dr. Marco. Next is consideration of a contract with TeachScape for professional development.
Got a whole crew joining you. Look to your right, look to your left.
Thought they might just leave me up here, Dr. Wilcox.
As a rose between two thorns.
You may want to correct that, Dr. Wilcox. On October 16th, 2012, the Washington County Board of Education approved a 20-month contract with TeachScape for the purchase of software, training, and professional development. The contract was approved by the WCBOE in the total amount of $395,869.98 for the period ending June 30th, 2014. Modifications to the contract for the 2013-2014 school year are being recommended. They include a price reduction for a waiver of setup fee of $2,805, a revised total of $393,055.98, and a reduced number of users of TeachScape Reflect, and increased training for a price reduction of $1,600. The revised contract total is $391,455.98. The balance of the contract for the 2013-2014 school year is $212,774.98. Staff is requesting approval of the contract modification as described.
Thank you, Dr. Marco. Is there a motion to approve the contract with TeachScape?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Brightman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rightenhour. Is there any discussion?
If I may, just offer a comment before the discussion begins. One of the things that you've just approved was our new evaluation system. And one of the things that we have heard is, how do you make this system fair? Well, one of the things that we thought about very early on in this process, literally two years ago, was we have to have some inner rate of reliability. We have to know that if you're a teacher in Hancock or you're a teacher at Vester, the principals are looking at the expectations for your teaching behavior in a very similar way. You're dealing with different students, but there ought to be an inherent fairness level that just because you're at one site or another site, you don't get to either skate by or somebody's not too critical of you. TeachScape is our professional development tool to make sure that our principals understand how to coach for better performance. It is an important part of what we're trying to do. And so, I'm going to urge the board to support this, even though the price tag is fairly high. To perhaps save Mrs. Brightman from being the one who always says it, this is one of those unfunded mandates, a consequence of the reform initiatives. No one would have had to buy an application like TeachScape only five years ago, but we find ourselves positioned today to have exactly that if we want to be as successful as I think you want us to be. And so, I want to thank Joni, who has done, Joni Burkhart, who's sitting in the front row in the red dress, who has done a marvelous job leading this initiative for the last year. She has been our direct contact to the TeachScape folks, along with Dr. Marco, and of course, Lisa, who has negotiated, I think, a great price for us, even though it is a fairly expensive price tag. With that, I'll turn it back to the board. Thank you, Dr. Hardings.
Sure. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Brightman?
Speaking to mandates, how much of the grant money do we have left from Race to the Top? Any idea what our, how we've spent it down?
I think we're on track to spend every penny of it. Chris does his normal reports. I think we have it all encumbered or almost all spent. We won't give any back.
That's good. I just had hoped we had a little extra, but not going to happen. As to the product itself, the reduced number of users on the Reflect portion, could you help us understand? It says this package is a video capture, so I assume it's a mentoring tool or best practice tool? Is there some reason that it's not being used as much?
And correct me if I'm wrong, Joni, but we've elected not, for this coming year, not to have guidance counselors and other itinerants such as social workers use the framework for teaching because their job is so unique and different. So, that would reflect the decrease in users.
Yes, it's occupational therapists, OTs, PTs, social workers, athletic directors.
So, it's the classification.
Right, exactly. We want to focus on the teachers of record because that is what the Maryland State Department of Education requires us to look at this year especially.
And just aside the proficiency system part of this, I know there was concern that principals and administrators were going to be overwhelmed with all the evaluation checklist. Would this possibly, and there was some talk that we might have to hire professional evaluators? Is this hopefully going to keep us from, is this going to be enough support for the principals and the administrators that we won't have to take maybe that next step?
I believe it certainly will. And looking at the demands that have been placed on school-based administrators, Dr. Wilcox extended the timeframe for completion of the proficiency test, just so that principals would have the needed time to digest the framework for teaching. It's a very comprehensive framework, and it requires principals to become very accustomed to it. I believe also having the second semester this year of no fault observation evaluation for our teachers has been an excellent opportunity for principals and assistant principals, as well as supervisors, to become very acclimated to the framework. Moving into this coming year, I believe we're probably positioned better than many other districts because we have put things in place to support teacher understanding of the framework as well as principal understanding of the framework. And we are very fortunate with the Teacher Incentive Fund for them to do a lot of the exploring of the framework and determining best practices and how we can most efficiently deploy the framework for teaching. But to answer your question, I do believe we have the capacity to effectively do it.
We think we're
I would be concerned if the Maryland State Department of Education had continued with the idea that we would evaluate first year every teacher in the system. They did correct it.
Didn't they do a 50% or a third or something?
It's a third phase in over three years. We probably would have struggled with a mandate of all teachers the first year.
What's, just one more, what's the average time that you think a principal takes to evaluate?
It's an interesting question. I asked our RET Day principals yesterday when I was meeting with them, and it's composed of five of the TIF principals. And when they initially started, you're talking about pre-conference, which is about 30 minutes, the actual observation, which can be 60 to 90 minutes, and then the post-conference is 30 minutes. And then you have the actual writing of it. Initially, they said it was taking them six to seven hours when you encompass all the different components to complete the evaluation. The TIF principal said, over the time that they've learned it, become familiar with it, they've gotten it down to about two hours, two and a half hours.
Wow, that's a huge difference.
But it will take time, and that's a learning curve that our administrators will face this year, and we certainly need to be conscious of that.
Thank you.
Are there other comments or discussion? Questions on Mrs. Brightman's motion to approve the TeachScape contract? All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Marco. Next is consideration of a gift in the amount of $8,000 to Williamsport Elementary School. Mr. Akers?
Good afternoon, President Hardings, members of the board, Dr. Wilcox. I'm here on behalf of Williamsport Elementary School to ask your approval of a donation of $8,000 from the Williamsport Elementary School PTA. It's going to be used to purchase 20 iPads and two docking units for those iPads to enhance the educational programming for the students at Williamsport Elementary.
Thank you, Mr. Akers. Is there a motion to approve the gift? Thank you, Mr. Rightenhour. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question's on the motion to approve.
I'm sorry. I guess, Dr. Wilcox or Rick, either way, when a PTA or any other parent group gives us technology, or I guess they're donating the money for the technology, so they've made a restricted donation, do they coordinate with staff, this is what we need? This is, in other words, we're budgeting a lot of these devices? Is this, how do we align that?
I can't speak to a specific one, but typically, it's usually, they will ask, you know, what people need.
What do you need?
And sometimes they ask the teachers, and sometimes they ask the administrators. But usually, something this big, this specific, there's, I'm sure there's been discussion between the administrators and teachers and the PTA.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Are there any other comments or questions? Questions on the motion to approve the gift? All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero, and the student concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Akers. Next is the schematic design for West City Elementary School.
Good afternoon, Dr. Hardings and Dr. Wilcox and Dave members. We're here today to present the schematic documents for West City Elementary School's career approval. Teams worked hard over the past few months developing these plans, and we're very proud to share them with you here today. Approval of these plans will allow us to submit them to the state in advance of the September 1st deadline for schematic documents for projects that are seeking construction funding in FY '15. So with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Mr. Fight and Mr. House from Bushy Fightmore Architects, and they'll describe the design in detail.
Good afternoon, everybody. Wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for giving us the opportunity to present the schematics, to address any questions or concerns that were brought up at our June meeting. And since our last presentation to the board, we have reviewed these plans and concepts with the city of Hagerstown, the fire marshal, various community members, various WCPS departments. And what we're presenting today is the culmination of those responses and the input that we have received to date. When we first received this project, we started with multiple site layouts. You know, we have the blank slate, if you will. And we looked at various arrangements, each one with advantages and disadvantages, and to lay all those options. And we looked at things such as site orientation, solar path, vehicular access, utilities that are available adjacent to the site. And with all things considered and laying all those options, the presentation today reflects what the team feels is the best overall site layout and building design. So to orient you to the site, this is a 16 and a half acre parcel located in Hager's Crossing Development. To the east of the site, we have the Buell Court. To the south is Hager's Crossing Drive. And the southwest corner is the, what we call the circle, which is the intersection of Hager's Crossing Drive and Barto Drive. And then to the west side, we have Cedric Drive, which right now just serves the community center and the homeowners association for the Hager's Crossing Development. So this site was unique in the sense that we do have street access on three sides of the site. And as we started to get into the, into the design a little bit more, on the east side, where Buell Court is, there's an inherent grade change that runs a good portion of Buell Court, about three quarters of the way back or so. There's a grade change of anywhere between 10 feet to 12 feet. And so any type of vehicular access that we would bring off of Buell Court would have inherent increased costs with this. So we started to take a look at Hager's Crossing Drive and Cedric Drive. And at Morgansville and other newer WCPS facilities, one design feature that's been incorporated into the site is the separation of the bus loop and the parent drop-off loop. And at this site, we have the opportunity or a distinct advantage in which we have an existing approved entrance off of Hager's Crossing Drive that we would use to utilize for the, for the bus loop. There'd be a widening of this loop for buses and for fire apparatus and whatnot. But utilizing the existing approved entrance and the turn lanes there on Hager's Crossing Drive would help save some, some costs in the overall project. Having these loops separated at such schools as Morgansville and other facilities, it keeps them separate for safety reasons, but then it also has the possibility of removing those, making them a little bit more remote from the entrance. So by, by creating two loops, or two separate loops, one off of Hager's Crossing Drive and one off of Cedric Drive, it allows us to get those drop-off points closer to an access point of the school. And it makes it also easier for, at dismissal time, it's very clear students go out either the north entrance or the south entrance. As I mentioned, bus drop-off loop would be in the south off of Hager's Crossing Drive. To the north of the school, off of the existing Cedric Drive would be the staff and visitor parking lot, and also be the, the parent drop-off loop. And there's some advantages to having the parking in this area in the sense that very close proximity to the school and being able to identify the main entrance to the school from the parking area, giving you that, that visual cue. Close proximity to the recreational fields located at the north end of the school, and also access to the gymnasium, in the close proximity of the gym. So this design allows us to be good neighbors to the existing community with the location of the school and the, the site layout, parking areas adjacent to the, to the recreational fields and to the school. But then also putting the parking and queuing area for the vehicles at that location also would restrict having vehicles backing up on Cedric Drive and out onto Hager's Crossing Drive. We had a very positive meeting with the fire marshal, in which Mr. DeHaven was very pleased with the site layout and the access that it would provide for the first responders. And one of the things that we discussed with him, that was a question that was brought up at our presentation in June, was the address of the building. And so we did get feedback from Mr. DeHaven that this would be a Hager's Crossing Drive address. And at the present time, it would be the only building that would have a Hager's Crossing Drive street address. So they did give us a, a number, but he said that that was a tentative street address number, but it would be Hager's Crossing Drive. There was a question brought up at our last presentation about the distance of the front door of the school from the property line. And at the south entrance, we are 205 feet from the south entrance down to the property line, which is a setting that is similar to Vester Elementary and Pangborn Elementary. There was a question brought up at our last presentation about the need for a traffic study. And our preliminary calculations of traffic indicated a reduction in the total day trips in the vicinity of the, of the site. This would be a reduction from the approved 240 multifamily unit development that would go in this parcel. So with placing a school in this location or on this parcel, it would be able to reduce the, the, the amount of traffic in the neighborhood. However, per our discussion with the city engineer, any type of development that goes on this parcel would require off-site improvements at Barto Drive and Garland Grove Boulevard at that intersection close to the McDonald's, which we would be required to put in a, a second left-hand turn lane. So that's an off-site cost that's inherent with any type of development that's, that's on this, on this site. There was also concern brought up at the last presentation about pedestrian access, and we've, we've taken a closer look at the, how pedestrians would not only access the site, but once they get to the site, how would they go around through the site? So we've added a number of sidewalks from the east on Buell Court at the northern cul-de-sac. They have a potential for a sidewalk at the midpoint, which is an extension of the existing sidewalk that comes out to Buell Court. And also access from the southeastern corner and the southwestern corner, and would also wrap up Cedric Drive to the west and, and give the potential for pedestrian flow throughout the site once they enter onto the campus. There was a concern over students crossing over the service drive to get from the gym out to the recreational fields. This is a service drive that serves the, the loading dock. And as with you all, we share your same concern that safety is the number one priority. So we want to make this as safe as possible for, for everybody involved, including the students. And we talked with the Transportation Department and the Food Service Department, and there'd be approximately two deliveries per day to, to this loading dock outside of school hours. So we're seeing a very low volume, and any, any pedestrian crossing of this during school hours would be done under supervision of the gym teacher or an assistant or something, or somebody like that. But what we're proposing for this location is a elevated pedestrian crosswalk, or what's commonly referred to as a speed table. And this would be approximately 10-foot wide crosswalk elevated up to the same level as the sidewalk, with appropriate signage and marking on the street that would let the, anybody in a vehicle know that the pedestrian crossing of this intersection, the pedestrian has the priority, and that the, the vehicle is kind of a secondary crossing of it. And as you see from these photos, that these types of speed tables or raised crosswalks are acceptable and actually recommended in parking lots and also in, in school settings. Our site plan also addresses the potential for a Phase 2 expansion if the building should ever need to expand from a three-round to a five-round school. So we're showing that at the southeast corner of the site, in this location would minimize the impact to the learning environment, which however many of you have ever had your house remodeled while you're living in it, you know, put that in a learning environment, it has real impact on a student. So anything that we can do to, to remove and isolate the construction to one corner of it is beneficial. Another feature of this is the core spaces for the school, which would be the cafeteria and administration area, and the IRC would be designed for the, the total build-out. So that way, our infrastructure is in place if we ever go to a five-round school. And then there's another feature that I refer to commonly as the, what we call the plug-and-play, the extension of the utilities. Any type of water piping, underground piping, refrigerant piping, electrical, whatever, we extend it to the, to the end of the building. And that way, if it would be time to expand, we literally extend those utilities, you know, sprinkler service or whatnot. And again, that has less disruption on the existing school, especially while it's in operation. And we've also indicated on the site plan some potential additional sidewalks as part of that Phase 2 build-out, to just be thinking ahead as far as site circulation if we would ever expand the school. So this is the first floor, the overall first floor plan. We have the bus loop to the south, and we talked about the south entrance, and then the parent drop-off loop to the north, what we're referring to here at the north entrance. And this gives us a kind of a natural access through the school, a collecting corridor, if you will. At the north entrance, this would be used for, this would be the, the visitor entrance, and the secure vestibule would be located up here. There would be a pass-through window from the secured vestibule into the administrative suite for a parent that's dropping off a permission slip or, or homework that somebody forgot, and would allow them to give the information to the administrative staff without, without having to have them buzzed into the, into the, into the office suite. But the administration would grant access from the secured vestibule into the administrative suite, where then you would be able to enter into the rest of the school. At the south entrance, we see that primarily as people arriving by bus, any walkers to the school. And this would be accessible twice a day for arrival and dismissal of school. Other times during the day, that would be secured and locked down and used for egress purposes only. And then we've also included some additional egress points and ingress points throughout the remainder of the schools, so the administration has the flexibility to operate the school how they wish with, with students arriving or dismissal, just giving them the, the flexibility of how they can, can operate the school. So we're going to focus real quickly on the administrative suite, it's highlighted in blue. As I mentioned, it's located adjacent to the, to the secured vestibule. From, from this location, they have clear views down through the north-south corridor and even out the main corridor past the gymnasium and cafeteria out to the exterior, to this paved play area. It acts as the control point. We have the door into the reception where they can be buzzed in, sign in, and then enter through this door out into the facility. Couple things to point out with this design, the guidance counselor and the health suite both have access from the corridor in the administrative suite, but then also have access from the corridor, so students can access it without having to go into the administrative We're next going to focus on the gym and cafeteria portion of the building. The gym is accessible from the, from the parking lot through a set of exterior doors located on the west side. And this is for after-hours or community use, evenings or weekends. Another feature of this design is a dual-use facilities, men's and women's toilet facilities. These would be accessible during the day from the, from the corridor, but then after hours, these doors along the corridor can be blocked, and the facilities would only be accessed from the gymnasium, which allows us to shut off the rest of the building without granting access to anybody after hours through the, the remainder of the, of the building. There's an operable partition between the gym and cafeteria, so we have the ability to open up any activity going in the, going on in the cafeteria can expand into the gymnasium. And then we also have access from the parking lot through a corridor into the cafeteria for the before and after-school programs, so parents can drop off and pick up their children. And again, this would limit access during that time just to the cafeteria. Also located in this module of the building is food service. We have our, our receiving dock or receiving area, which is adjacent to the mechanical and custodial areas. We have the stage located at the east end of the cafeteria, which as prescribed in the ed specs, doubles as the music classroom as part of Phase 1 design. And there would be a movable partition located across the opening of the stage, which would allow us to, to function as a music classroom. And so to access this stage, we have stairs and, and a set of ramps that would be accessible off the cafeteria or off the corridor that would allow them to gain access into the music classroom while other events are going on. And then also located in this quadrant are the art classroom and instrumental music classroom. So this takes all of our encore programs and puts them in, in one section of building. And as, as we were designing it, we were looking, it kind of takes the, the noisy section of the school and puts it in the, in the corner. Next, we're going to talk about the IRC, the Instructional Resource Center. And as you can see, it's located in the hub of the school. It's the heart of the building. It's the, the technology center for the school. And we took a look at a lot of the design trends for 21st Century Media Center, and some of the trends... And some of the trends that we're seeing are multipurpose spaces for traditional and digital media, smaller focus on printed media, but a larger focus on student needs such as social interaction, self-learning, and collaboration is one of the keys that we see repeated a lot. Another design trend is flexible learning spaces, whether it be for individual, small group, multi-class, or even just simple quiet reading. A lot of these 21st Century Media Centers are open with a lot of natural daylighting, and some of them even have exterior reading spaces. So we reviewed these trends with WCPS instructional staff, and that helped us develop the design for the IRC at West City Elementary. So there was a question brought up in our June report to the board as far as the security of the IRC. And we have designed this, the media center, to be secure, but yet provide an open atmosphere to both the students and the staff, and provide flexible spaces using both hard walls and glazing throughout the perimeter. So there is access to the IRC off of the main lobby and corridor, so it is adjacent. One of those things that when you walk into the school, you will see the IRC as a feature of the school. We want to feature the technology in the IRC throughout the placement of digital media, flat panel monitors, just, you know, the newest technology in what's available. We want to provide various reading areas throughout the IRC. And these can be accommodated also by having something as simple as mobile shelving that can be rearranged in a number of locations or a number of arrangements, so to provide, you know, larger or smaller reading spaces. Our design right now features what we're calling a reading platform or a story platform. And this is just another way of offering a reading area or an instructional area. Our main instructional area located in the corner would feature a, what we'll call a technology wall or instructional wall, which would be just a large expanse of wall in which could be a writable surface students can write on in multiple locations, has an integral overhead projector that we can use in the, like a Smart Word application. This would be the main instructional area for the IRC.
So Erin, I hate to do this to you, but can you jump ahead to maybe skim quickly through the pictures, let people see? Because I know the board's going to want to comment on some of this, and it's gone well beyond the 15 that we allocated.
Okay. I'll pick it up. This is the view coming in the main entrance. So you see we've got reading area, technology area, circulation desk with the office behind it. This is the reading loft above that we'll get to. Story platform. And then this is that instructional wall, the technology wall at the east end. So we're going to walk to the instructional wall, and we're going to look back kind of the other direction. So it's just showing the large writable surface with the integral projector, the loft you see here in the background. And just through use of furniture, just flexibility in how this instructional space and the rest of the IRC can be used. We're going to walk forward, and we get to the media classroom, which is on the south end of the IRC. And one feature of this, we're looking at the use of operable glass partitions that would allow this space to open up. So this could be used as a flex space as part of the media center, but will also have the need or the requirement to be closed off, to be used as a science classroom as part of Phase One, or to be used for the state testing at this point. We're going to walk into the media classroom and do a 180-degree turn. And as we're looking back out again, you see the doors that are open up. You see arrangement of tables here and how this could be used in a classroom setting. And as we walk out of the media classroom, and we're going to elevate ourselves a little bit, you see the instructional area with the instructional wall, some flat panel monitors located above that for use with instruction, reading areas throughout the shelving, and then the reading platform or the story platform. And then this last view is a, just a quick rendering of the reading loft itself, which has some additional stack areas, reading areas, and then another smaller instructional So then the remainder of the first floor is the primary wing, pre-paved through first grade. And then we also have SWD classrooms and then associated support spaces here at the core, and then stairs located here at the south entrance, and then an elevator that's located at the intersection of the two corridors. When we get to the second floor, you see the IRC loft, which would be accessed from the stairs within the IRC, but then there'd be also access from the main corridor from the elevator or the stairs that come back a hallway to the IRC. And then the other spaces on the second floor are grades two through five and associated support spaces. And if the building ever expands to a five-round school, here's our expansion to the southeast. Our music moves from the stage to its own dedicated room, which was the art classroom, which moves into its own dedicated art classroom. Science moves from the media classroom to its own dedicated room. And then there's a minor relocation of SWD classroom that would be here in Phase One to move over to here, so we can group all of grade one together. So we have pre-paved through grade two on the ground floor, the first floor. And when we go to the second floor, primarily grades three through five with some additional support spaces. Our elevations, this is showing from the parking lot, this is looking from the north towards the south. So you see the administrative wing, the primary wing, and then the gym and cafeteria. And then this is the south elevation, which is from the bus loop or from Hager's Crossing Drive. There was a question brought up at our previous discussion about the massing of the building and the exterior. So what we're looking to do is to, through various masonry materials, creating a scale of the building that is sensitive to the students and the staff, but then also to the neighborhood. And the setting of this school would be relatively similar to, again, what you have at Tangborn or at Best, or as far as the building sitting back off the street. We want to maximize the daylight in the classrooms, but also give them, or give the teachers the ability to control the daylight under those. So we have some renderings here, again, showing north elevation. This would be the north entrance to the school with the administrative wing. And then at the south elevation, the massing and the south entrance, as you see it from the bus loop. Our design currently utilizes both low-slope and pitched roof systems, and this combination gives us the ability to provide the most cost-effective way to provide space for the various building systems that are going to be developed here over the next few weeks. There was concern at the last meeting about the use of flat roofs. And through BFM's experience in Maryland, Pennsylvania, Virginia, and West Virginia, we're not currently aware of any inherent problems with low-slope roof designs. With that being said, all roof systems that we design for this project will be designed and detailed in strict accordance with VGS and with the Public School Construction Program guidelines, and will contain a minimum 20-year warranty. We will also continue to evaluate the roof systems for the aesthetics, the maintainability, lifecycle cost, and performance to provide the best possible design at the lowest possible cost. So with that.
Okay. Thanks, Erin. Just before your questions, I just want to reiterate that we've worked with many stakeholders through this whole process. We have the approval from the Advisory School Design Review Committee from the county, and I think that was included in your package. We've met with architects from the MSD facility branch, and they've offered their insights. Washington County staff, city staff. Erin mentioned the fire marshal is complimentary. Had a community meeting, and we've met with that spec member. So we think that we've worked really hard with all the stakeholders involved to do that. All that being said, we're keenly aware that this board's opinion and insight is really the only one that matters. So we look forward to your comments and questions as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins. Is there a motion to approve the schematic design for West City Elementary?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Breitman. Any discussion? Mr. Bailey has the right to have the first crack at it if you like.
Gentlemen, address my question from previous session about the distance from the road to the entrance to the building, and 210 feet, I believe you.
205, yep.
205 feet. Certainly is adequate. No, I'm okay.
Other questions? Mrs. Breitman.
I appreciate the opportunity to have this discussion. First of all, I was looking at the scheduled construction cost and contingency and noticed that that off-site road extension or improvement, as you called it, is a $100,000 price tag on that. When several of us went to the city public hearing on the PUD amendment, and city staff at that point mentioned something about another road extension somewhere if this housing phase something started in, and it was near the school, I guess my question to you, is there another road improvement that we're going to be held responsible for?
No. No, I think the other road extension they were talking about was, I think it's still Hager's Crossing Drive, being extended to McDade Road to the north from the site. And that would be the responsibility of a developer who would move forward with building more houses to the north of the school. That's not our responsibility.
And just to follow up on that, I believe the city's going to vote on the amendment in September, if I don't have that date right here. So assuming at that point, if they vote to approve the amendment, zoning, that's just a zoning, so any design issues then would still need to go before the planning, City Planning Commission, correct?
That's correct.
Just significant changes or just about everything? Is there a protocol that we have to adhere to at the city planning?
Well, I believe city planning, they would look at the overall design, and any changes from there on out, we would have to get reviewed and approved by them, because they're, that's all tied into the building permit process. It's, you know, one of the initial steps, the first steps in it. And so any changes from there on out would have to go back to the planning commission.
And this design is still, this hasn't been presented to them. There hasn't been any, okay, that's where I'm going. So there's still a lot of time to make changes if we choose to. Just a couple, and I'll, at some point, if someone else wants to jump in here. When I look at the second floor plan, I know there was some creativity in the IRC area. The second floor just leaves me without a lot to excite me about. And I was thinking, is there any possibility of extending that open? If you look at, now that's the extended. If you go to just the straight second floor, there you go.
Sorry. My finger was fast.
Is there any way of pushing the, if you go to the southeast corner, pushing the four, five, and the two fifth grades out, since that's the direction we'd be going in possibly anyway with the future extension? And opening some space, creative space up there on that second floor? My sense is that space, the original downstairs first-floor space, would not be enough. If we have a lot of collaborative team effort, it seems important. I'd like to have everything on one floor, at one level. But if we're having that, shouldn't we give those classrooms some opportunity up there as well?
We're still working in that area, so we'll see some changes as we go through the process. But we're also bound by the amount of square footage we can build within the state guidelines for their funding. So we have to find that balance between classroom space and the open spaces like you're speaking of, and stay within the 63,000 square foot envelope that the state will fund. Anything we go beyond that?
63,000, is that set?
That's it.
The classrooms, do those have movable walls as partitions between?
We've talked about putting some movable partitions, maybe not between every class, but between selected ones. And we're still working on that.
Any thought about opening up the ceilings to the mechanicals, the plumbing and so forth, and leap any cost savings there? It's a kind of a nice look for children.
There could be cost savings. I'm sure the architect would speak to the acoustic issues, though, and you really want to make sure that you have a classroom where a teacher can be heard from one end of the room to the other. So there's always trade-offs on that. I don't know if you guys could speak to that.
Yeah, we've done that in some schools and in some facilities. And as Rob said, there is a trade-off between the wow factor in the classroom and the acoustics and the cost savings by not having to put a ceiling in. But then you also look at, you know, your ductwork becomes more expensive because you want it to be spiral ductwork instead of rectangular ductwork, and then painting that and cleaning that. So we'll look at places that we can use that in a way that it becomes the most beneficial to the school, obviously, and like the gymnasium and possibly the cafeteria. Those are things that we'll get to when we get into the design development. But, you know, those are things that we'll evaluate.
And one final question. Back when you began this design concept, the brainstorming with your people, and forget political reality for a little bit, where would you like to have seen this school sited on that piece of land? Be quiet, Ryan.
Well, my direction to the team was to site it where you thought it was best, plain and simple. And we went through many iterations. We tried looking at it in the back. We tried looking at it further forward than it is. We tried looking at it on the right side. We tried looking at it on the left side. And I think we've landed where we think we can have the most functional site with the bus loop separate off the entrance in a cost-effective way. With that entrance, it's, there's no road improvements along Hager's Crossing Drive. The turn lanes are already there to get buses in and out of that. So there's a cost savings there. Pushing it too far toward the Buell Court, toward the east, there's great issues, I think the architect spoke to. Pushing in the back, there's some interesting fillback there. Also, we like having the playfields in the back where the kids are a little more safe from traffic and things like that. We just think it sets up. So I'm pretty satisfied where it ended up, right where it is. And it wasn't, that building moved everywhere on the site. We tried, you know, all of us were working hard in many different iterations. You know, some that we crumpled up immediately, threw on the floor, and others it stuck a little longer. And so I'm satisfied where we landed is a good place.
I was going to say, Mrs. Breitman, you know, I agree where it's at right now, I think is probably the most beneficial location for that school, because it gives you the best benefit of the land that remains for the use of activities, student participation, and it allows the school to serve as somewhat of a security barrier for what occurs, say, to the public side versus what's occurring on the student activity side. So I think we're in a pretty good location where they are. The, I think the bus loop removes a lot of the traffic off of the front street, and because of the queuing requirements for the because of the queuing requirements for the family cars, I think we're estimated around eighty, we have to queue there. You know, that was basically a natural area for the public parking to be located, and coincide with the recreational fields in the community, so.
When we started with our, our initial sketch for the site plan, it was not that very different from what you see today, although we did kind of do an end around with a whole bunch of different scenarios. And from that initial sketch that we produced to what's being presented here, that building has moved closer to Hager's Crossing Drive, about forty feet or so. We, a lot of the major changes from, from that first design to this were with the bus loop circulation and with the vehicular access off of Cedric Drive.
And not because we were particularly trying to get it closer to Hager's Crossing Drive. It just ended up that way.
So the three of you are very comfortable with this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Swain?
I have a question about the schematic design review committee, if I may, not about the design in particular, but I noticed that this, this meeting, I'm assuming was the first that was held, July twenty-fourth, and then
Yes.
The letter speaks to the fact that the committee will meet again in September or October. And then I'm noticing that one of the individuals that is, was not in attendance would have represented the instruction side of the house. And I'm, I'm just wondering if there will be the opportunity for someone to be appointed to the committee to attend future review committees, to kind of give input into what's happening with regard to the design and how that impacts instruction?
The answer, the answer is yes, but that sheet is not really indicative of all the instructional people that have been engaged in this. As recently as two weeks ago, I sat with a number of folks from the instructional side. Jana was there, we looked at the library, she offered her thoughts on the spaces. We see a lot of that conversation reflected in there. Matt has been engaged in the conversation. We will have a designate to it, but I will tell you, I think tons.
Tons of input. Thank you.
So just, can I say one thing? So I know the three that are most responsible of this, like the site. I still don't. But I don't get a vote in this thing, I'm just telling you. I like it further back, but I, I'm just gonna leave it at that.
Mrs. Harsman?
I just couldn't not say that, because some board members have heard me say that. I don't want them to think that I've just wussed out.
I don't particularly like to be
Not you. Okay, I mean, you just gotta know.
Okay, I had a couple of questions. I'm still concerned about the fact that the kids have to walk across the entry to the maintenance area. And I'm wondering if you've thought about flipping the cafeteria and the gym, the cafeteria and the gym? So that the gym was in the back and the cafeteria was in the front? Oftentimes in elementary school, the, the cafeteria is used for different activities for the kids, and dinners and so on, and it just seems like that would be a logical place to put it, and move the fields more toward the back so that the kids did not have to walk across the maintenance road and could still go to the fields out from the gym. Also, I think there's a, it's very difficult to see on here, but I think there's like athletic courts there in the back, which come out from the cafeteria rather than from the gym. So I'm not sure what that plan is to use those for, but it would seem like if it were closer to the gym, it would make more sense. I'm not real fond of the kids coming out to the front of the school to go to those fields, because I just think keeping them safe is easier to do in the back of a school than the front. Also, I, I was not real happy with the bus loop, because I think that, that leads people to think that that's the front of the building. So when they go up into the bus loop, they're not gonna be able to get in that door. I was never real fond of parking lots in the front of a school either, and that one doesn't seem to really have anything that looks like a front, like a main entrance. So I was concerned about that.
Those are good comments. We've had some of the same comments, too, and we're continuing to work on it. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the upstairs, having that, that area upstairs, is that intended only for the two through five grade levels? Is that just, just intended for those to use?
No, it's, it's part of the Instructional Resource Center, so you could have children being
Okay, so you're gonna take preschool kids up those steps and kindergarteners?
At the discretion of the instructional staff.
Exactly. So that won't be used by pre? I just see steps as a hazard to young children, no matter what, where they are or how they're padded.
Most of the young reader collection, I'm sure, will be down on the ground floor, or all of it actually, so I think, I think that'll satisfy them.
And I'm not sure, I'm not sure how that will carry with the downstairs, when you have that open area upstairs, if they're using that for the upper grades, I'm not sure how the noise level's gonna be handled by the downstairs where there may be silent reading, which would not be possible, possibly. On the extended, on the extended, if, if we needed more room, I see that the art room has been moved, so that's gonna be down with the first and second and third grade levels. So would the pre-k and the kindergarten kids be coming into that area while the others are in class to, to have art and so on?
Yeah, they could.
So that could be disastrous to someone who was giving a test that day, as the kids come down the hall and into the art class? Okay, that, instructors may have given you that. And I think maybe that's all.
Okay, no, thank you for your comments, and we'll take them all into consideration.
You're welcome, thank you.
Mrs. Fisher?
I have just two questions. The glass railings around the reading wall, how high are they gonna be?
By code, they would be a minimum forty-two inches. We're showing them glass. You know, this is a quick rendering for schematic, so the exact material and height and everything would be evaluated further, but code dictates a minimum forty-two inches.
I'm not worried about the material, I'm just worried about the height and some kids leaning too far over. My other question is, I'm, I'm glad to see the other sidewalks that have been added, but I'm also concerned about the cost of all the other sidewalks. Do we have any estimate on that yet?
We're not that far along in that detail and estimate, but we'll certainly keep an eye on it, but of course, safety is our first concern, so we want to make sure that we're aggressive.
Thank you.
Ms. Rineau?
Yeah, just real quickly, a couple comments. Duct tail onto a couple things that people have said. I understand the, the dynamics and the limitations that you have. You have a certain amount of square footage you have, and you have a certain amount of money to spend. I mean, that's the bottom line. You know, we've done it with buildings, with the park lot. I am concerned about the location, and I, Rob, I told you what my personal preference is. You know, and I'm annoyed in some respects that, if you look at it, it's, it's, they said they wanted, you know, like a neighborhood vision. But, you know, the old neighborhood schools were fifty feet from the sidewalk, in from the road. Yeah, and, you know, so this is not that, yet it's also not like, for example, Morgansville, which is, you know, way back. It's kind of the in-between, or Vester now that's way back. We've gone Vester on the street, Vester, you know, all the way in the back of the lot. I, you know, I would like to see it back farther. I think you mentioned about the, the grade change. And, you know, the tenth, it's that much, ten-foot grade change?
To the east, yes.
And that will have cost impact, I'm certain, if we, now, you said something that caught my, you know, got my radar really standing up. The, some interesting soil in the back of the lot?
There's a lot of fill. We haven't done the boring yet, but we know that there's a lot of fill at the very rear of the lot.
There's a lot of rubble that went up there when we walked the site.
Really?
Yeah, when they blasted rocks for the development.
Sure, yeah, when they did the development, and that became the dumping ground. Which may, you know, make my interest moot.
We're to the point where we're gonna be doing some boring, so we'll know really quick what we have.
Okay, and let me ask you one final question. I mean, like I said, you know, the building part, it's not, you know, it is what it is, and I have no problem with it. You know, I mean, I would answer what Karen said about the gymnasium. Gymnasium, my, my preference would be it's close to the parking lot, because it's gonna be used more than cafeteria, as far as for outside activities. Can we separate this? I mean, can we look at, continue to look at location, but, you know, give approval to the building itself? I mean, it's gonna be, I mean, I think you guys can put this building pretty much anywhere on the site. Am I correct?
Certainly, yes. The board can give whatever direction it needs to give in order to approve it. So if, if in general you're satisfied with the floor plan, and you wanted to offer more direction to staff to continue through the DD level with investigating more site options or different site options, we could certainly entertain that, too.
Maybe my personal preference, and I don't know what the majority will want, my personal preference is to take a look at it at different spots, but, or a different spot. But I also understand, and, you know, that, that moving it to the back could have, you know, obviously some cost, and, and we're close to what we want to spend. So I understand that part. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams?
I'm still not sold on this stairway and the IRC and this loft idea, and I'm just wondering if that's for design and aesthetics, or is this something that was asked for by Jana, and I'm, I'm just
I actually don't think Jana likes it very much, but I'm not sure. I'll let her speak. But I, I will tell you, I think it, it came out of some of our conversations earlier about Twenty-First Century Learning Spaces, and what we wanted to do was create a place for upper-grade students to come into a library where they could really collaborate with each other. So we were really anticipating at some point, the fourth and fifth grades being on the second floor, and they would come in and use this as a space to do group activities to work. When, you know, the question was asked about, is the, the glass gonna be forty-two inches high or higher, I actually saw it more being a floor-to-ceiling glass, so that the sound of the interaction didn't cascade down into the library. But I also wanted the kids to have the ability to come down from the second floor, go into the library, take a look at the resources there, use the collaborative workspaces that were down there. I think in one of the earlier conceptual drawings, what I'd asked for was not the stairway to be like this, although I truthfully don't mind this at all, but for the stair to widen out in the bottom, that became more of a theater-style seating, so the kids could come down the stairs, sit there, talk to each other, talk to the librarian, talk to whoever's in the room. But space and money make you make compromises in the learning environment. So the other thing I thought is, by having that open loft area, if we did the right thing with windowing, we could capture daylight and push it down into the building in a way that we couldn't, not just on that lofted space, but into the library in a way that I thought was gonna really be effective. So, you know, I, to answer the question directly, I think the loft idea was not really any particular persons in the district, but grew out of the conversations about creating a Twenty-First Century space. And I've kind of championed, I want to be clear. The last thing I want to say is, I'm not so concerned with the site, what I'm concerned with is the bus loop in front, because I think that just sends the wrong message. If the bus loop could be slid back down along that backside, but now that I'm hearing the grade issue, perhaps that doesn't work quite as well as I thought. I just think that if you're in a neighborhood and you come, and you're coming home, or you're going somewhere, the last thing you want to see is twenty of our buses queued up dropping kids off. I just think there's a better place to do that on this property, but I'm not a professional in design, I don't really understand urbanomics and all that. It's just kind of an aesthetic sense that I wouldn't want to look out my window for breakfast and see buses queuing up. And I really want to be respectful of the neighborhood.
Well, I, on that note, I would, I would agree, and we had studied with the bus loop to the rear and everything like that, but the buses are gonna be less of an impact to the community than a hundred and some cars parked out there, but that's
Well, I would, that's why I say I'd slide it down the side.
Yeah, the one thing I want to go back to is this loft area. I think it becomes a feature for the second floor. Otherwise, it's just classrooms up on the second floor. And when you can open this loft area up to that second floor, the second floor now becomes part of the first floor, or part of the IRC, and it connects those two wings. Otherwise, you're isolated, and to go to the IRC, you gotta go downstairs into it, where now the IRC is part of that second floor, and I think integrates nicely and creates a, a relationship between first and second.
So your, your thought is that the kids using that loft area would not necessarily be under the instruction of the media specialist, but would be someone coming in with another teacher?
With their teacher, their parent, working on a project.
And I'm sorry, I cut Dr. Harding so, so, no. Oh, he's my boss, so I think, one of my bosses.
Something in the back of my mind, at some point, I thought, we were told it'd only be three or four buses coming to the school, most likely.
More than that.
Wasn't this?
I think, I think maybe six to seven initially. I have to get the report that we did for the closing of the schools with more later. I think eventually, if you, if you built it out to a seven-hundred-and-forty-five-seat school, you'd have ten buses. I think, if my memory is correct, it's six to seven initially, but, you know, I'd have to go check, so I apologize.
And you need to be prepared, so. We've had schools already, we've opened up seven-hundred-and-thirty student elementary schools, and the day they opened for the first, they were pulling in modulars into the school because the community looked for babysitters to put their kids into that school, because it was the better school within the community, and there was an influx of kids, students.
I'll just, I'll just say where I am on this. I, and I said this actually to Dr. Wilcox a couple, when I first saw the drawings before any of this discussion. I think the bus loop out front looks, I don't think it's appealing. To me, it looks like a go-kart track. I mean, if I were a kid, I'd be riding my bike around that thing all day. It just, this is a school in a neighborhood. It's one of the, one of the reasons that we picked this site, because you're gonna allow kids to walk, it's gonna look like it's in the middle of a neighborhood. So I got to thinking, there's, there's sort of two approaches one could take to having a school in the neighborhood. One could be, you could put the school up on the road, so it looks like it's just another building among a number of houses or townhouses or whatever else, which seems to be what the Hagerstown Planning Commission prefers, and that's fine. Or you could put the building in the back so that all the fields in the park area are connected to what is already a recreation area. It would essentially be a continuation of the pool, the tennis courts, the basketball court, the recreation center, then on the other side of the street, you'd have a baseball field, and you'd have all the, the assets we can bring to bear, so it would look like one big park. Now, I have a preference among the two of those, but I think the design that we've got in front of ours, in front of us, is half of each, and I'd like us to pick one. I'd like the bus loop to go in the back, and I'd like to bring the school much further up towards the road. I just, if it's five, six, or ten buses that are gonna be there morning and afternoon, to make this design choice for that limited amount of use, I just don't like the, the way that it looks to me. So I, I'm not gonna support this schematic design if our vote today locks us in to this layout on the site. If you can tell me or tell us, and I think we all need to know this before, so that we can all decide how to vote, what is cast in stone if we vote yes on Mr. Bailey's motion? What are the opportunities to still make changes, and what are the mechanisms for that to happen? Particularly for me with site layout.
Sure, yeah, these, again, you know, they're called schematic for a reason. They're a, a basic building block design. Nothing is really cast in stone. You're going to see spaces move around based on discussions with the instructional staff within the building, and we certainly have the ability to continue to tweak the site in any way. I know we're gonna bring the design in the middle of the design development phase back to the board for a progress report, so we can certainly keep tweaking the design and bring some more options until we come to a conclusion on where everybody agrees.
and bring some more options until we come to a conclusion on where everybody agrees it should be and everybody's satisfied. So a vote today, and especially if you put in your motion some language that says, while we continue to look at the site and things that you might be keyed in on, would certainly point us in the right direction and allow us to move forward with the state process so that we can continue to be on track to get the funding we're going to need.
Well, I, I know I certainly don't want to hold, hold you up from the state process, but...
Sure. The state, the review at schematic design level, just so the board knows, is done by MSD. It's not done by the Department of General Services. So they're much more focused on the educational aspect of the building and, and how it matches up against the ed spec. The DD level and the final construction document level design reviews done by the state are done by the Department of General Services, and they're much more nuts and bolts and where is everything like that.
And that would be the point of no return on the site, on the site layout.
Yes. I would think at, at the end of DD level, when we go to submit that to the state, we would want to be locked in at that point, so that these folks then can move forward and do all the detailing they need. It's a lot of work, and, and so changes beyond the DD level, which would be approximately two months from now, we'll come back to you. Those, those dark drawings would be delivered to the state no later than November 1st to stay on track. And at that point, if we could lock in at that point, that's, that's where we need to be at the, right then.
Mrs. Breitman, you want to...
Just a clarification on, help me understand if we as a board were to change the interior, I mean, at what point, you say this goes to MSD. We make a significant change, does it, where do we...
Wouldn't be an issue. Everybody's looking to make sure that it, it meets the needs that were addressed in the educational specification, so we want to try to stay true to that as much as possible. And certainly, there's enough flex in that document to do some of the things that you're talking about. We need to be locked in by DD level, plain and simple. So if there's, if there's things that need to be done between now and then, this is the time to do it. What, what this drawing, again, is meant to be is a, a basic building block, a good start. I think we've got there, I think, I think we've made a lot of progress. Obviously, there's still some concerns from the board, and that's great, because it means you're engaged, and I, I appreciate that, I really do, every comment. So, yeah, we can continue to make changes.
So November 1st, the week prior to November, you've got to be locked in?
Yes. Mrs. Fisher?
If we, if the schools moved closer, and we moved the bus loop to the back somewhere, wouldn't that kind of mean we should move the front door to the side-facing Hager's Crossing Drive, which means probably all the administration has to be swapped to?
There's various ways we can mirror and rotate the building to, to meet the needs. Let's, just give us a chance to take a look.
It's a community school, so the, the idea that people would walk up to the front entrance is not out, I mean, that's, doesn't seem out of, inconsistent with what we envisioned when we bought this property.
On the other hand, I don't see any problem with kids using that loop off-school hours to ride their ba, their bikes on. My other concern is, how much more money is it going to cost us to make all these changes? Get new drawings, get...
Well, the drawings, you've already paid for, so there's no charge there. You've got to get it right, so. We'd only give you something that you don't like, so.
There's, we'll go one more question, Mrs. Hirschman, and I want to try to wrap, wrap this up.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify as far as flipping the cafeteria and the gym. I think we should concentrate on what the school will use more, which I think most of the activities are cafeteria-oriented, and then the community can use the gym whenever it's convenient for us, as opposed to them. And the other thing is, is there a possibility of a standard plan that can be used for other elementary schools so that we don't continually face these changes? I realize that site-specific is a big deal, and I understand that, having heard those words from my husband innumerable times, but I'm, I'm thinking that there ought to be some kind of sort of basic element there that would lead us to maybe incorporating extra little things to different buildings, but sort of a, a skeleton to start with, so that we do not have to go through all of this. And if it hit, hit on what we needed one time, then it should actually hit on what we need other times with just a little bit of tweaking.
It can, and we always, we actually always start with that question, is, do we have a design that, that we can use? Some of the things that cause a design to change are changes in the educational specification. Over, over time, it's always being tweaked, and so there's changes.
And I understand that.
So then you can't always, it becomes a point of no return as to whether you can actually tweak an existing design, and the amount of work that would take versus starting from scratch. Classroom wings are classroom wings, though, so, I mean, you're not really gaining anything by reusing a design of classroom wings in, in terms of design dollars and stuff, I think...
Yeah. The, the biggest thing that controls a school design is site, because you'll never have the same site.
Yeah, and I, I understand that, but I'm just talking about like a basic idea that there's something in that.
Well, they are, and then that's why we tried to design with modules, and we've done many elementary schools, and we've done one school that was site-adapted to the five different sites. But it was a module that we had, we could rearrange, but sometimes you had all one floor, sometimes you had to stack.
Right.
I hate, I hate to cut off a good discussion, but I think we need to, I think we need to let the board work its will on this one. So the motion on the floor is to approve the schematic design, motion made by Mr. Bailey. Are any motions or amendments regarding the, the motion on the floor?
Yes, Mr. President, I, I move that we amend to include that and ask the architects to continue to look at alignment and location of the building itself, as well as the, the exterior needs, parking areas and buses.
Okay, that's...
Could I withdraw my motion and allow that to be the main motion?
Well, then we'd need another main motion that is for, for, is to approve it. So if, if his amendment passes, we go back to vote on your motion as amended, and it would incorporate all of them. Does that make sense to everybody? I want to be sure everybody understands what we're voting on.
Question on Mr. Reidenauer's motion?
Is, is there a second?
I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
Sorry. In your motion, you did not include any possible adjustments to the interior?
Well, I think they come as a, as a matter of practice. It's not something that, as they've mentioned, they will be looking at other elements as they move forward before they get to DD, DD, Design Doc. Am I correct?
Yes. During DDs, we were closely, even more closer to the instructional staff to...
So the footprint, but the footprint basically is what we have?
Well, I think it's going to continue to be tweaked as we look for opportunities to...
But it's not going to get bigger than 66,000...
No, I know that, I just...
That's right.
Anyway, I get it.
Any other questions or comments on the amendment? Questions on Mr. Reidenauer's amendment? All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion, the amendment passes, six to one, the student concurs with the majority. Are there any other amendments or motions with regard to the main motion? Seeing none, the question is on Mr. Bailey's motion as amended. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes six to one, the student concurs with the majority. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is personnel action. Ms. Francisco. Thought you might have fallen asleep in the back. I'm kidding.
Dr. Hardeens, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board. As discussed at closed session, we have several staff changes for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve staff changes?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Thank you, Mrs. Breitman. The question is on the approval of the personnel actions. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries six to one, and the student and Mr. Reidenauer abstain. Thank you, Ms. Francisco. I said six to zero, right? Six to zero with two abstentions. I just want to be sure it's correct. Reports to the board, board member committee reports. Mr. Reidenauer?
The Human Resources Committee met last Wednesday. We discussed, again, information that will be sent to the Policy Committee regarding use of social media, and also some goals that the department is looking at to submit to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenauer. Mrs. Breitman?
The Facilities Committee met on July 23rd. We discussed the PUT Amendment, and then I think that evening actually attended, several of us attended that public hearing. Some community partnerships with Vinsborough High School and Williamsport High School. We had several, lengthy discussion on some of the facility goals and never got into the watershed implementation plan, and we'll be moving that forward to the September meeting, as well as some other items, and that'll be September 24th, and I believe we're going to be doing that at Western Heights.
Mrs. Fisher?
Policy Committee met July 23rd, and earlier during this meeting, we've already approved two of the policies, the wellness policy and the employer, employee evaluations. There were two of the things we discussed on the 23rd. We also discussed regulation, can't read my handwriting, HDR, I think it is, board member expenses, and we will continue our discussion on that at our next meeting. We also discussed policy IKD, graduation honors, but decided to postpone any decisions on that until our student rep can join us and offer some insight, hint to that. And finally, we did also talk about goals for 2013 and 14.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Mr. Bailey?
We're going to meet on August 27th. Sorry.
Finance Committee met on July the 23rd, and we talked about the year-end status of the healthcare self-insurance fund. That will appear on the, on a future agenda to the board. Mr. South will be making a report. There was not a complete accounting for the end-of-June expenses to the account, but the fund balance is in good shape and healthy right now. We discussed the review, or did a review of the legislative audit with Mr. South, and the superintendent and the board will receive updates and recommendations. The process has already begun in addressing many of the questions that arose during the legislative audit. There will be a timetable for completion of that. We heard an update on the 403B and the 457 benefit plan with the recommendation of having multiple vendors, and our August meeting will spend considerable amount of time in preparation for that. The Finance Committee established three goals, and those were, are ready to share.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mrs. Hirschman?
The Curriculum and Instruction Committee met on August the 20, I'm sorry, not August, July 23rd, and Ms. Downen and Ms. Fuss shared a literacy overview with many members. They advised that during the 2012, 2013 school year, staff prepared for moving to the Common Core Curriculum. Staff is aligned, has aligned the curriculum with the new standards and developed curriculum guides. Also, staff will be providing professional development to ensure support for teachers. Let's see, and the teachers, they were concerned that the teachers be sure to get the support that they needed, so staff shared, we, we were concerned, and staff shared that the lead teachers are to be providing professional development along with coaching and mentoring in their schools. We set up three goals that we would like to see achieved during the next school year for instruction and curriculum, and our next meeting will be the 27th at 12:45 in the Board Conference Room.
Thank you, Mrs. Hirschman. Mr. Gronenndike? Anything from Student Government?
Student Government has not met. However, I am attempting right now to get in contact with the various presidents of the high schools in, in our county to discuss the upcoming policy meeting about graduation speakers and to get their input on that.
Excellent. And just for the sake of clarity, for people who might contact you, your, the board email address set up for the student representative, are you accessing that? Can people reach you there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. I just wanted to be sure. Mrs. Breitman, anything from MAE legislative?
No update at this point.
And Mrs. Hirschman, Mrs. Williams, anything from the MAE agenda, or MAE conference planning?
Just that four of us are planning to attend the conference in October, and it should be very informative. We always get good information from the conference committees, choices of speakers and activities, so I think it'll be very worthwhile.
Great. Well, look, I know I'm looking forward to it. I'm going to take just a moment and talk about the Budget Committee meeting at MAE that I attended. I just want to inform my colleagues that MAE does look like it's going to recommend changing its bylaws. That vote will be taken at the October meeting. Part of that, and this is really what I wanted to bring up to all of you, will be a request of the membership to support a supplemental dues for the current fiscal year. This is in order to try to solve some of the budget issues they've had within, as they change their accounting method. The change in Wash, the additional amount that Washington County would be required to pay as dues would be $2,119. So it's not a huge amount, but it's, it's about a 12% increase or so from what we've been paying before. The membership will vote on that, as I understand, as well as on the bylaws. I wanted the other members who are going to MAE to be aware of it. If you're not going to MAE and have a strong feeling about it, please let any of us know, and Mrs. Breitman, as a member of the Board of Directors, I'm sure can carry forth at the board level any other input that, that members here have. So I just wanted to pass that along. There was something else I needed to do, and I can't recall it right now. Oh, that's right, we're going on to future agenda items. August 20th, in addition to the normal closed session items, in the public session, we will have a couple of contracts regarding Downsfield Pike, a report on self-insurance fund for healthcare coming out of the Finance Committee, a report on the standards-based report card coming out of the Curriculum Committee, as well as an additional policy to approve. We will be discussing on September 3rd, under miscellaneous business, the state discipline regs. I believe we have until October 30th to offer comment, so if members could be prepared to offer any opinions for the welfare of the group at the September 3rd meeting, I think we can, we'll have plenty of time to make sure that the state hears what we think about them, should we choose to take a position. I think that's all I've got for future agenda items. The next item on the agenda is a motion with regard to policy BAA.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we suspend policy BAA and send, send a recommend, or send a request to the Policy Committee that they review the policy and look for ways to, to improve it or change it or to rescind it.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenauer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Breitman. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Hirschman?
I will not be voting for that because I do feel that we need to, along with everyone else, be evaluating ourselves.
Thank you, Mrs. Hirschman. Is there any other comments?
I'll, I'll just mention that we have presently about 250 policies. We're constantly reviewing, revising, eliminating, and aligning with new laws and mandates all the time, and I'd like to thank Mrs. Williams for raising the question on this policy, and, and I look forward to hearing recommendations from the Policy Committee, so I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Breitman. Are there any other comments? Mrs. Williams?
I'm, just as I guess kind of a heads up to the Policy Committee, there's another policy, policy AH, accountability, that reads, "The board should also hold itself accountable for carrying out its mandate to plan, to make policy, to evaluate, and to lead." So that might be another policy that we need to be looked at as BAA is being looked at as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. I know the Policy Committee is currently reviewing all the A section policies, so I'm sure that'll be part of it.
What did you say, the...
AH?
A H.
Uh-huh, AH, accountable. So if, if I might add, just a comment, you know, if, if it becomes the will of the board that, that we don't have a... board that, that we don't have a process of annual self-appraisal, then how, how will we hold ourselves accountable? I think that should be a question that's on our minds, and on our minds collectively.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams.
Well, I, I would like to say, in response to that, that I do not believe that there is one member on this board who does not hold himself accountable, who does not evaluate their performance, who does not take their role as a board member seriously. We have probably the most effective self-evaluation or evaluation of any group, because every four years, you know, the public has an opportunity to grade us. So, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I'm comfortable responding to, to constituents who might ask or question a decision I make. I'm comfortable responding to the public during the election cycle. But, I think the problem has always been that it becomes individual members looking at one another, looking at other members, and evaluating them for them. In other words, they are telling you how they see your performance, and how they believe your performance should, should, should be carried out. So, I have no difficulty saying to anyone, "I self-evaluate, I self-assess at every possible, after every meeting, or even between meetings."
Thank you, Mr. Reidenauer. Are there other comments? I'll just say that I, you know, I've been to, I think, three, perhaps four retreats. We didn't call them self-evaluation, but it's effectively what we were doing since I've been on the board, and I think every time we came out of those meetings, the board was in not as good a place as it was when we went into the meetings. And when I think about self-evaluation, and I'll tell you where I assess us to be, I think when we do things like we did this morning, which is discussing student achievement, when we do things like we did in January, which is discussing the future of the people who work in this building, when we do things like we did when we discussed the Educational Facilities Master Plan, when we discussed the future of our facilities in this county, when we're focused on our work, whether it's the budget, instruction, human resources, I think, I think we did great when we had a, a work session to discuss the new evaluation method, when we're talking about the future of what teaching looks like in Washington County. I think we do really good work together, and it's my hope that we can all keep, however the self-evaluation policy comes out, and I'm anxious to see what the Policy Committee will do, I think if we keep our focus on the work that we were elected here to do, I think we can and have done great things for the people that we serve. If there are no other comments, the question is on the motion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes five to two, and the student abstains.
If I may make a comment as chairman of the Policy Committee, any suggestions, I guess, from members who are not on the Policy Committee? If you want to get those to me or to Mr. Trotta, we'd appreciate any additional thoughts that might occur to you. I'm certainly going to be looking through some of my documentation at home from MAE and so on to get some ideas, so I appreciate anything you can add to our discussion when it comes up.
The members of Congress serve over 300 million people. They'd only self-evaluate themselves.
We'll move on to board member comments. Mr. Reidenauer?
Nothing.
Mrs. Breitman?
Nothing this evening.
Mrs. Fisher?
I have nothing.
Mr. Bailey?
Very quickly, attended summer school graduation in Washington County now, and it was a dignified ceremony, very nice. Washington County now has an additional 44 high school graduates.
Congratulations to those graduates, and thank you, Mr. Bailey, for representing the board at that graduation. Mrs. Williams?
I have nothing, Mr. President.
Mrs. Hirschman?
Nothing.
Mr. Gronendike?
Nothing.
And I have nothing either. If there's no business before the board, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you all.